He's waiting. Okay, good, good. Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to council Monday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, calling me in order at four P M. As always, remind you to turn off your electronic devices on this vibrant. And we're good to go. I have a motion here by the council accepts the agenda for Monday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three as a regular council meeting circulated amended move by. That's like saying by council. Any additions or additions? You can then call a question on favor. Very thank you. Any declaration of interest today? Hearing done. Motion here that council hereby adopts the minutes of the regime of council held on Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty three, including a council held on Tuesday, April the eleventh, twenty twenty three, as if they amended move by. That's like saying by council, any errors, omissions and amendments? Hearing now call question on favor. Very thank you. Today we have delegation with Food Cycle Science Ontario, and this will be virtually presented the session by Jacob Hamlin. And Jacob's on the line waiting, so welcome Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors and members of staff. I'm just going to share my screen over here. Can you confirm that you can see this? Okay?
Yeah, we're all good.
Perfect. Thank you. So I just want to start by saying good afternoon and thanks very much for having me on today. My name is Jacob Hanlon and I'm the municipal program coordinator here at Food Cycle Science. And I'm really excited to discuss a food waste diversion program opportunity for the town of Marathon. For those of you who may be attending Noma this week, my colleagues will have a booth there and we'd love for you to stop by. I'm going to go over a lot of information in a short amount of time here, so I just ask that you stick with me and happy to go over any questions at the end of the presentation. And for anyone who might be at Noma, my colleagues will be there, happy to chat about the program. So just to briefly speak a little bit about us and who we are. Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company and we're based out of Ottawa. And we're one hundred percent focused on food waste diversion solutions. We're doing this using our innovative technology called the Food Cycler, which is an in-home food recycler. It's sold direct to consumers through partners like Vitamix. We put them into schools and school boards through our partnerships with not-for-profit organizations. And then to municipalities as well through our municipal solutions division. So our municipal solutions help many small rural, remote and northern communities keep food waste out of their landfills. We're currently partnered with seventy-three Canadian municipalities across seven provinces and territories from Nelson in British Columbia up to Hay River in the Northwest Territories and then many municipalities in Ontario who are often facing struggles with food waste management. Or where green bin programs aren't just, aren't necessarily an option for them. So I'll mention that a few of our northern Ontario partners in Niebing, Terrace Bay, Fort Francis, they've implemented successful food cycle programs. And and we're looking to continue spreading the information and see if this is a good fit for for more of our northern Ontario municipalities. So the problem with food waste is that it is avoidable. It accounts for a large portion of our household waste, sometimes a majority. And it's made up of mostly liquid, which is heavy and freezes in the winter time. So on top of that, when you put food waste in the landfill, it's responsible for generating harmful greenhouse gases. And all these factors make it so that food waste is a problem that has a strong municipal impact. So one of the impacts to municipalities is that since food waste makes up such a large portion of our waste stream, it is causing our landfills to fill up quickly. As you know, operating a landfill is costly for municipality and we want to extend the lifespans of our landfills for as long as possible. The environmental environmental impact here is that when you have organic waste in the landfill and it's being compressed by tons and tons of garbage. It's in an anaerobic environment where instead of creating CO2 during the breakdown process, it's actually producing methane, which is many times more harmful than CO2. And to put that in perspective, taking one ton of food waste out of the waste stream equivalent to taking one car off the road for an entire year. In our communities, putting food waste in the garbage causes odors, which are unpleasant for humans, of course, but typically attract animals like bears and raccoons who like to go through our trash. So removing the food waste from the garbage eliminates these issues and it reduces the overall volume of waste. So this can save the town on any kind of hauling or disposal or transfer fees. It can save space in the landfill and it can save residents on hassle and any waste fees that they might face. So we often get asked, haven't we solved this problem already? There are green bins, which are common in big cities with high population density and the red infrastructure. But this can be cost prohibitive or operationally challenging to implement. Many people in your community might backyard compost and while we think this is a great solution, unfortunately, it's not feasible for everyone and certainly not a year-round solution. And there's still the concern about bears and other animals. So finally, the easiest solution is to continue landfilling organic waste, but the long-term impacts here are costly and harmful to the environment. So at Food Cycler, what we're doing is proposing a different way to deal with our food waste. And this really focuses on making it easy to deal with and right in our homes. So essentially what we've done is built a small kitchen appliance, which is about the size of a bread machine. And you put in your food waste and this can include things like meat and poultry, fish, dairy, even some small bones. And then you push a button and in a matter of hours, what you get is a dry, sterile, odorless and nutrient-rich soil amendment. The machine can be used anywhere that has a plug. Most people do store it in their kitchen, in their basement, or even in a heated garage. And the food cycler will process on average between one and three kilograms of food waste per cycle, with each cycle taking between four and eight hours to complete. And it uses between one and one and a half kilowatt hours of power, which is pretty similar to having a computer plugged in for about the same amount of time. And then the result is this handful of dry, sterile and odorless soil amendment that can be used in your garden. It can be used in an existing composting system, given to a local farm, or even processed with a leaf and yard waste system. So we currently have these two household solutions that are used by residents within our municipal programs. Both machines are similar in size, about a cubic foot. But the F C thirty there on the left has a two and a half liter capacity, while the Maestro has a five liter capacity. And we often recommend the Maestro for larger households or residents who just create a lot of food waste. But we ultimately leave it up to the residents within the program to decide which model they would like. And I'll just emphasize here that in the cycle that takes about eight hours or less, there's a ninety percent reduction in the weight and volume of the food waste that you're putting in there. And so this end product, it's it's full of nutrients, it's beneficial to the soil health and it helps your plants grow as well. So speaking of this byproduct, we have a list here of many of the beneficial uses of it. And so most of our residents in our programs use it to fertilize their garden soil right at home. But it can be added to a backyard composter, it can be dropped off at a local compost site, donated to a local farm. And then the use in community gardens is another option as well. So from an environmental standpoint, the food cycler is a net negative carbon solution. And what we mean by this is that just like by planting trees or using solar panels, when you use a food cycler to avoid bringing food waste to the landfill, you're avoiding more greenhouse gases than processed than you're creating. And this can't be said for municipal operations such as waste facilities or waste and recycling collection services, which often rely on a large fleet of CO2 emitting vehicles. So in terms of the economic impact, the solution offers a return on investment by significantly reducing waste management costs for the town. You're looking at savings of upwards of a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars per ton when you compare to traditional methods that involve hauling and disposal. So one thing we've learned from working with our municipal partners is that residents are very interested in being part of the solution. They want to try new things, they want options, and they want their government to bring these things to their community. So with the food cycler, you get to bring something innovative and tangible to your residents. And they don't need to live in a big city to be able to divert their organics. We believe that food waste diversion should be available to all Canadians, no matter where they live. And with the food cycler, we're reducing waste right at the source before it even gets into the garbage stream. So we're focusing on with with no pun intended, what we call that low-hanging fruit. Because since food waste accounts for such a large portion of the waste stream, it is the single most impactful strategy to reducing waste and achieving any kind of diversion targets you might have. So I mentioned earlier that we're working with many municipalities across Canada. To date, we have completed pilot programs in over forty municipalities and over forty-seven hundred households. And we found that the results have been overwhelmingly positive. We're able to achieve a significant amount of net new waste diversion. We have a generous user experience rating of four point six out of five stars and a ninety-eight percent participation rate from residents within the pilot program. So many municipalities have expanded their programs to more households after the initial pilot. In Nelson, out in British Columbia, for example, after two successful pilot programs, they're putting a food cycler in every home of their city of about eleven thousand people. So several months ago, Food Cycle Science was selected as a finalist for Impact Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge, which is a three-part initiative from the Government of Canada to reduce Canada's food waste. As a finalist, we were awarded with four hundred thousand dollars to go towards these programs for Canadians and to find more Canadian municipalities as implementation partners. So we're using this funding to invest directly into these pilot projects at a heavily subsidized price. And these pilots are helping us move into the final stage of the challenge, which comes with a one point five million dollar grand prize. And any of this future funding that we receive will continue to be invested right into these programs for Canadians. And any municipalities that partner with us will have the right of first refusal on any subsequent funding. So just to quickly go through the pilot program here, just a few more slides and then that's it for me. It's a twelve-week project and residents will purchase a food cycler from this with a subsidized rate from their municipality. They'll use the unit, track the number of cycles per week. And then at the end of this twelve-week period, residents get to keep their food cycler. But then we ask them to complete a brief survey so we can evaluate the program's success. The results are then presented back to you in a final report or a feasibility study. And this data is then used to support future waste management decision-making or to accompany a recommendation for an expanded program or a grant application to expand the program. And this final report writing and the grant support writing are things that we offer as part of the program. So here's the pricing breakdown and structure of our program. So they're work, they work based on a subsidy model where Food Cycle Science provides an initial discount as well as the Impact Canada federal funding, and this gets the price of each unit reduced by fifty percent. We then ask that the municipality subsidizes the cost by one hundred dollars per household, regardless of which unit is chosen by the resident. And then participating residents will choose which model best suits their household and they contribute the remaining amount. And then after the twelve-week pilot program, the food cycler is theirs to keep. So just a few pilot recommendations here before I wrap up. Based on our experience, these are the recommendations we have for a municipality of under twenty-five hundred residents, we recommend that the pilot is fifty households. And then between twenty-five hundred and ten thousand, we would recommend a one hundred household pilot. Because again, these are programs that are often new to a municipality and it's important to start small, collect the data. And then from there, we can discuss the expansion of a program if there's interest. And and I'll just say that these are guidelines, these are recommended based on our experience, but we are open to tailoring the program to your needs or to your budget. So I just want to wrap up here by saying that we welcome the town of Marathon as partners in this food waste reduction challenge. We think you'd be a great fit for the benefits of the program and we've seen a lot of success with some of the other northern Ontario communities. Today, I just ask that you kindly receive this presentation as information. And if there is interest in partnering with us on a funded pilot program, we ask that you refer to staff for a recommendation and report. And I just want to say thank you so much for taking the time to watch my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thanks, Jason, for that. And Jacob, sorry, we'll we'll definitely wind up for questions from council if they have any of you. That's like.
Yeah, maybe I have one. So I'm going back about, it's probably ten or fifteen years ago. We partnered with a company to do composters in the home. They look kind of like this. And I was really excited about it. I was, I actually had one of the composters. It was sort of an unmitigated disaster in that the the units smelled, they wouldn't dry materials properly. I just wonder what has changed in the technology in that decade that sort of is going to make it work better this time?
Yeah, thank you for your question. Yeah, so that's a, that's nice to hear that you've heard of the technology. And yeah, in the in the last decade, it has definitely changed a lot. With our machines, the cycle would never last longer than eight hours and it's always going to be a completely dry substance at the end. All the moisture is vented out from the machine as warm air and over that process of about eight hours, because it's spread out so far, there's never a buildup of liquid in the cupboard or on the wall or anything like that. It's really not a noticeable amount of warm air that's coming out. In terms of the smell, all of our units have carbon filters inside that have charcoal pellets. And these filters filter out any odors. Typically, residents would go through about three to four filter changes a year. Each change costing about twenty dollars. And these filters are really, really good and just ensuring that whether food waste is just sitting inside the unit before the cycle starts or during the cycle, there are no orders that come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. So one quick question. So with any of your partnerships that you've had with other municipalities, have you ever also included like a third party or a local corporation or business that manages with the waste management at all or waste services? Is it just the municipality directly?
Thanks for the question. Yeah, so we have a few partners where it's, let's say if it's on a county level, I'll use an example in Alberta, Flagstaff County. They have a government-run waste organization called Flagstaff Waste, where they run all the waste and recycling for a county of about twelve municipalities. So that's one example where we're working with essentially the waste hauler that's not a private company, but they're they're a government-run hauler. And they have their own landfill and they collect for for all the municipalities there. So it is something we do. We are quite flexible in our programs. We have a few county-wide programs in Ontario here in Alberton County and Bruce County as well. So while we typically start at the municipal level or at the lower tier level, we do have programs that have progressed to upper tiers and to countywide or with government waste haulers involved as well.
Yes. That's a good one.
Thanks, Jacob. I was just wondering what's normally most municipalities' next steps after the pilot program? Do most keep going or is that it's just up to the residents afterwards or is there another program after the initial pilot?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So basically, the opportunities after the initial pilot are quite open. Where we've had like the Nelsons in British Columbia who opted to go citywide with the program. We've had places, especially here in Ontario, where they'll gauge resident interest throughout the program. They typically keep a waitlist after that first fifty or a hundred or two hundred units. And on our end of things, we're quite flexible in saying if you want to add another one hundred in, let's say, year two, or you want to hit a certain percentage of your population of your households. We're flexible in doing all that. There's really no limit to what you start with or what you progress to or how you progress that way. We've had one of our partners start in twenty twenty-one and progressed with an additional two hundred households each year in twenty twenty-two and this year as well. And now they're in about ten percent of their households. That's over in Trent Lakes. So we're quite able to adapt the program to resident demand, to what council approves and all that.
Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, I think residents are, so you just stated the pilot project, there's some outlay of money that a resident would have to do to show interest and get the unit. But at the end of the pilot, that stays in their house, it's theirs to own, the municipality doesn't ever take it back, it's their private food cycle.
Yep, that's correct. So this is, this whole program is utilizing federal funding, utilizing a municipal subsidy and allowing residents to get these at a cost well below retail value as part of a waste diversion program versus just buying a a machine from a retail store. And then, yes, all we ask from the residents is to just track their usage for twelve weeks, complete that survey at the end of the first twelve weeks to give us an idea of how they like the program, if they have the support they needed, if the machine did what they wanted it to. And and that way, we get our data, we present it back to you and the machine is the residence to keep for good.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Jacob. Anybody else? I have a couple of quick questions in regards to you mentioned about the carbon filter, the simple average cost of twenty dollars a unit. So on average, three per year roughly?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. So how long do the devices last historically as they've been operating? What's the, you know, life cycle of a of a device?
Yeah, so the smaller unit there, the F C thirty, that one is about a five to seven-year life expectancy. And the Maestro, the larger unit, is about a seven to ten-year life expectancy. All our units come with a one-year warranty and typically anything that's going to happen to them or any kind of manufacturing defects is within that, typically within the first month or two. And we handle all the warranties and the replacements and residents within the program, they have our info, our customer care team is available for them to reach out to us and we help troubleshoot problems and and replace the unit if need be.
I think you also said in regards to the comments that you can use this product in indoor plants as well?
Yep, that's correct. So within the instruction manual and the resident guide, we give the guidelines on mixing it, the the byproduct with soil at about a one to ten or a one to twenty ratio. So you don't want to fill up your your indoor planters with it, but you want to mix it in like it's a fertilizer because it is nutrient-heavy and you want to make sure that it's mixed right in with that soil, indoor or outdoor.
Okay, I got one more in regards to the amount of time you can put your waste into the device. You said there's no order. So if I got a small family, two or three people or maybe three days before I could turn it on?
Yeah. Yep. So within our municipal programs from the almost five thousand households who have completed it, we have an average of about four cycles per week. So typically, the larger families will, they might use it every night. And what's great with it being about an eight-hour cycle, it's an overnight process essentially. But on on average, from all of our resident partners, it's about four cycles a week that they would use it.
Great, thanks. I don't see any more questions from our council. I really appreciate the actual information, the presentation. And as you said, we'll, we'll, we have a few members going to Noma this week for the AGM. We'll have an opportunity to visit the site, the booth and look at the devices. But we'll bring it back for administration to discuss and we'll go from there and we'll look and see what it looks like for our municipality over the next little while.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time and have a great rest of the day. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. Have a good one. Okay. So what we could do is we could ask administration to do a little bit with Council Lake and CEO Skrtchinsky and Sal will be attending. And if Council Suki will be attending the Noma. Oh, Council of Arms, no.
Council, we are not.
Sorry, yeah. Okay, so we'll all, I've already seen the devices, but we can have a discussion maybe on the next council meeting just to see what we, what our thoughts are and what if we want to be involved in a pilot program of these years.
Depending on the direction we want to go, could be looking at bills, waste services, see if there's a partnership there too.
Sure.
See like a building to.
Good idea. Okay, fair enough. Great, thanks. Up next, we have a report on the marathon. Oh, sorry, student council reports. I almost skipped. Not myself, sir. No, not every time. I've been very good last few meetings, not skipping by you. So we'll go with Council Skrtchinsky because she she could, you're ready to go.
Oh, yeah. So last week, I think it was, we had all the surrounding schools, grade eight and seven come in for a transition day that goes on every year. So it just makes sure that the kids who are coming to Marathon High School are incorporated, they see what class they're going to like. Like we had some older students, they're eleven and twelve, bringing them to their block B class, so they could just see what it's like in a classroom. They got to know each other, the surrounding schools, by having a basketball tournament. And then during lunch, they're who set up to like Marathon High School, who love the Nova all opportunities in school, the cadet program, and from there, opportunities that had a marathon, had their booth, and then new had their booth. So it's just a way to get the students incorporated into the school because high school can get a little daunting, especially, you know, you're not from here, maybe you're from the river, I'm from Overport, you don't really know anyone here. And
Great. Thank you for that. Counselor Zulli.
Yeah, so as daunting as high school is, the sports are still the best part of it. Show up just for the sports, still go to class. But we're all in it for the sports. And speaking of sports, in Badminton, we have three students who are proceeding to Enwassa. We have Kale Lake in boys' singles and Brooklyn Machano and Willow.
Bolio.
Bolio. I'm very sorry, Willow, if you're watching this, I don't know how to say your last name. And they are going for the girls' doubles. We also have midterm reports that were sent out from the high school. So and there's no hiding them unfortunately anymore. Can't stash them in your backpacks because they are available to parents over Edsby. And lastly, today we had some, the grade ten student write the OSS LT, the provincial literacy test. So good luck to everyone who wrote that.
Great, thanks. And I just want to remind the public that we have both our student councils going up to the Thunder Bay District, sorry, Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association AGM this week in Thunder Bay. And we speak in before this meeting, there's going to be probably nine to ten ministers there, so we're going to have our student council have the opportunity to ask those ministers a very important question that might relate to your future and future of our students in our community. So I look forward to that. So next three reports. Up next, now we have the report on the Marathon wastewater treatment system by Mr. Paris.
Good evening.
Thanks, your mayor and council. All right. So in front of you is have the twenty twenty-two wastewater treatment plant report. The following report is submitted to council for information purposes only. It's in submitted by Northern Water Works, which is the agency we have on submitted to the organization for wastewater and for water. This report has been completed in accordance to the condition of the eleven for the amended environmental compliance approval issued to the Corporation of the Town of Marathon on September twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, and continue with it. This report covers January first to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And it's intended to provide a performance of record for future references, ensure that the ministry is made aware of problems as they arise, and to provide a compliance record for the terms and conditions outlined in E C A. Copies of the report are available at Town Hall and on the town's website. There's no financial implications and no options. And you're, we're just giving this to your administration is presenting the twenty twenty-two wastewater treatment plant report for information purposes only. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions to Mr. Paris from council? Who are you, council?
Just around the phosphorus, that was the one thing that popped out in that report. Is that, is that something that is kind of a one-time thing or is that a?
No, it's, we continue to manage the phosphorus actually. And if you go back into history, I believe it was in two thousand thirteen when the phosphorus equipment was first implemented. And we continue to tweak it basically is what I'm going to say as we continue along with that process. When I spoke to Northern Water Works, we reviewed that that issue mentioned, there was no concern brought forward with it. We are investing though in capital this year, as council has approved capital of seventy thousand in regards to, you know, cleaning the clarifiers and digesters, which we'll continue to improve. It's based on balancing the aluminum into the process. And while we tour that facility, we'll get a little better understanding of it all.
Yeah, it's amazing. I would thank you.
Anybody else? Interesting stuff as it is, it's a lot of technical stuff in our report, but we got to be fully aware of our water being produced and supplied to the community members. And we are at the end of the day ultimately responsible for that product. So doing the tour is really good. It's an upgrade and update for everybody to get to understanding what it is. And new council will be interested as well to see our our operations work. So thanks for that report.
Yeah, thanks, your mayor. We're just finalizing the dates as well to do with this.
Okay. Sound like June was good for everybody, but.
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking for is probably there. I'll continue to mitigate that with.
No snow, it's actually.
That's exactly what we're looking for. That's not helping us right now.
And thank you. Appreciate that. Up next, we have a report on the loan application to Ontario Infrastructure Lands Corporation copy of Mr. Gribble. How are you doing?
Pretty good. Thanks, your council. At its last meeting on April eleventh, council agreed to finance the construction of the new Public Works Garage with a loan from Ontario Infrastructure and Alliance Corporation. That's the official lender and it falls under the administration of Infrastructure Ontario. So I'll say Infrastructure Ontario or I O throughout the report. An application has been submitted to I O for a eleven million dollars loan payable over twenty years. Our initial application is being reviewed. The next step requires council to endorse the application through a bylaw. The bylaw demonstrates to Infrastructure Ontario that Marathon is committed to obtaining long-term financing. After receiving the bylaw, I O will set an interest rate and payment terms. At that time, a formal agreement will be required to solidify the arrangement. With the attached bylaw, the municipality is not bound to accept the loan. The project is budgeted to cost ten point seven million dollars. The most current cash flow anticipates that spending will commence at the beginning of next month and continue until June, two thousand twenty-four. Interest costs of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for these temporary borrowings are included in the two thousand twenty-three budget. Once the budget, once the project is completed in two thousand twenty-four, the temporary borrowings will be converted into a debenture with a set interest rate and a payment schedule. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing issued the annual repayment limit for the town of Marathon on March ninth. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing issued the annual repayment limit for the Town of Marathon on March ninth of this year. At five percent for a twenty-year term, municipality can assume additional long-term borrowing of twenty five million dollars. So this eleven million dollar cost of a public works garage is within the limit. So the options are approve the attached bylaw, two zero four nine, authorizing the submission of an application to the Ontario Infrastructure and Land Corporation for the financing of the construction of Public Works Garage. Or council can request administration to look for other ways to finance this project. Administration's re- recommending that option A be selected, approving a bylaw, twenty forty nine, authorizing the submission of an application to Infrastructure Ontario.
Okay, thanks for that report. I have a motion, your council, goodbye. Subtient touch for a recognition of loan application to the Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation. I refer that the appropriate bylaw be the authorizer submission of this application to the OILC. Move by. Council Lake, second by. Council Supi questions. Council Lake.
Yeah, I think we did a pretty good job last meeting discussing this particular loan. I feel very comfortable with that. Uh, my question would just be around, uh, that amount you're allowed to borrow, looking kind of longer term as we look at an active living center and, uh, what are the options? And, uh, would that really just leave us with fourteen million that we can borrow after this? Is that a hard cap or do you negotiate that with the government?
Uh, you would have to discuss with the ministry to exceed that amount of borrowing. Unless there's, uh, different, uh, financial things that would result in years going forward. So if we start having a, a large increase in other revenues such as property tax or whatever, our borrowing limit will go up.
It can go up if there's development in the municipality, okay. I just don't want that to be any of those.
For sure. Anybody else? Yeah, so obviously the municipality was in a situation back in the early nineties around that, uh, you know, had to go under supervisory, uh, monitoring from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs Housing because of the extended borrowing. So it definitely looked at all avenues at that time. So just clarity, so you're saying the twenty five year, twenty five million is the cap right now. We're at picking eleven million, at least fourteen million dollar borrowing or additional twenty million, no, twenty five million or above this eleven, right?
No, we, we borrow twenty five million.
Okay.
Once we borrow eleven, that will go down to fourteen.
So just for, for information purposes, is the manor still considered as part of our overall debt load?
It's not being recorded that way.
Perfect. No, that's, that's, because it has to be looking at the big picture, right? So.
Hmm.
Uh, so obviously we're, we already approved all this stuff, it just formally tonight to understand that, so. All good. So we'll move our second, first, now call a question on a favor. It's just, uh, it's, it's one, yeah, it's one of those things we have to do to make sure the municipality still has the proper service level that residents expect to be doing. Thanks for that, Mr. Gribble. Appreciate it. I have a motion here for check runs, the amount, uh, council payable and, uh, payroll and, and council payable on the amount of six hundred ninety four thousand, six hundred sixty dollars, thirteen cents. And payroll on the amount of two hundred fifty nine thousand, nine hundred twenty two or fifty two cents. Move our second, please. Council Lake, second, uh, Council Valens. Any questions of those check runs, accounts payable? Harry Dunn, call a question on a favor. Harry, thank you. I have a bylaw next in regards to the, uh, municipality warrant for the twenty, uh, the additional eleven million dollars for the Public Works Garage. And the bylaw has to be read as title number twenty forty nine, being a bylaw to authorize certain and new capital works of the Corporation of the Town of Marathon municipality to authorize the submission of an application to the Interior Infrastructure and Lands Corporation for financing of such capital works to authorize temporary borrowing from OILC to meet expected expenditures in connection with such capital works and to authorize long-term borrowing for such capital works through issuance of debentures for the OILC. Be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass the twenty fourth day of April, twenty twenty three. Move by. Council Valens, second by, Council. Any questions of that bylaw? Harry Dunn, a call question on a favor. Harry, thank you. Up next, we have an additional bylaw in regards to repealing a bylaw. This bylaw number twenty fifty, a bylaw to repeal, bylaw number twenty fourteen, being a bylaw to appoint the chief building official of the Town of Corporation of the Town of Marathon, be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass the twenty fourth day of April, twenty twenty three. Move by. Council Valens, same by Council Lake. Any questions in that bylaw, Council Lake?
I just, why do we have to pass a bylaw to?
So it's a statutory requirement that the municipality has a chief building official, that's approved by council?
Okay, I didn't.
Yeah, three positions we need, clerk, treasurer, and a CBO. Hill council. The public would love that, yeah. Okay, all that. Everybody's good? All in favor? Harry, thank you. And congratulations, uh, to, uh, to Tim in regards to his, his finalization of all his, his work in the CBO. So he really did that in a really quick time, so very pleased to have him on board. So. Uh, I just had a little announcement here in regards to coming up next week, uh, the Spirit North, the Ontario, the North of Spirit Healthcare Group. And the Marathon Tim Hortons, uh, location will be teaming up again this year for the annual Smile Cookie Week, starting the week of May one through seven, twenty twenty three. And the Smile Cookies will be available at the local Tim Hortons. And a hundred percent of the proceeds will be donated to the Marathon Long-Term Care Project. All ordering is also available. If you have any questions, please contact Mitchell at two two nine seventeen forty, extension two two. Which will be very happy to take your call and put your order together with Tim Hortons. It was a very successful program last year. Well over ten thousand dollars was raised for the long-term care addition that will benefit all of our community in the long run, uh, with the fourteen beds that, uh, they're going to add on there. So good work and, uh, look forward to pumping up next week if I can. And anybody else is, uh, wants to volunteer and, uh, and make some cookies up, get a hold of Mitchell? You would definitely love to have your assistance there. A lot of work, a lot of cookies. Okay, anything else? Were we, uh, adjourned this meeting at the hour of four twenty seven? Move by. Council Lake, same by Council Valens, thank you. Four, four, what did I say? Four thirty seven, four thirty six, seven. Did I say forty seven? So, Jesus. Okay, Council Lake and Council Valens, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Actually, just for the, um, what?